Thank you all for being here on a lovely Tuesday afternoon evening. Let's begin with a roll call, please.
Mayor Downey.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Kidd.
Here.
Councilmember Brooke.
Present.
Councilmember Collins.
Here on the phone.
Councilmember Gates.
Hi Mayor.
Councilmember Meredith.
Here via telephone.
Councilmember Weddham.
Here.
Manager McKean.
Here.
Attorney Blor.
Here.
Okay, I have invited Councilmember Gates to lead us in a way.
(inaudible). (inaudible) of the United States of America and through the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, our first matter on our agenda is a proclamation and an opportunity to recognize the wonderful people. And of course, I've had some familiarity with the years, pointing to my wife's now 21-year success overcoming risk. So for me, this is an especially pleasant experience tonight to recognize Pinkup. Whereas I've invited Deputy Mayor Kidd to come to the diocese. Who would be coming to perform?
Ladies, come on down. We have, this is Pinkup Port Angeles Week, and we are some of the seroptimists, and we have a proclamation. I'm going to read a proclamation from the city of Port Angeles in recognition of Pinkup Port Angeles Week. Whereas cancer is a word that spreads fear throughout family and community, and cancer is one of the most devastating words to hear from a healthcare perspective. Cancer is a disease that has touched the lives of countless people worldwide, and cancer is a word that brings people together in love and support to fight, to find a cure. And cancer is a disease, warning, threat, opportunity for research and cure. And cancer is a war we are fighting and winning many, many rounds. And cancer is a word we want in the history book to be feared no longer. Whereas Seroptimist International of Port Angeles invites the entire community to join together and dedicate this week to fight cancer through awareness, advocacy, and action, turning Port Angeles pink. We therefore shall be known as Pink Angeles this week for these important days celebrating the success of Operation Uplift and their commitment to bring assistance to cancer patients and survivors. Now therefore, I, Patrick Downey, Mayor, on behalf of the City Council, and Cherry Kidd, Deputy Mayor, as a breast cancer survivor and president of New Seroptimist, do hereby proclaim this week of June 17th through 24th, Pinkup Port Angeles and Pink Angeles Week, and change the name of Port Angeles to Pink Angeles, and call upon all citizens to work together toward dedicating this week to fighting cancer. Thank you. This is interesting. As President Seroptimist, I'll accept this. I've always catched someone, but it's exciting. So these are some of the wonderful ladies who work with Pinkup and Operation Uplift and Seroptimist. We're here for the community, so many of us are cancer survivors, and we know that this is a disease that has to be beaten. So we touch all of our lives, and I'm so proud to be a Seroptimist, and I'm so proud of all the ladies that work on behalf of the healthcare for the women and the citizens of our community. So thank you, Seroptimist. Give them a big hand. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Our agenda comes next as our first of two opportunities for public comment this evening. I have been presented the sign up sheet with three individuals who have signed up to speak at this first period. Let me just say again, Chris, we'll go up to a period of time up to 15 minutes. Any of you, any of all of you who may come to the podium, I'd be providing three minutes. We'll start with a green light, we'll go to a yellow light, and then do a red light. And when the yellow light comes on, it's about two and a half minutes into the period. And so we would like you to respect that, and give as many people as possible an opportunity to speak. When you come to the podium, please state your name and your address for your record. First up will be Michelle Lee.
Hi, I'm Rachel Lee, live at 3124 South Peabody. The first thing that I would like to talk about really quick is that I'm a member of PA CAN, and we're going to be having an overdose awareness walk. It's our third annual one, and it's going to be August 31st, and we're inviting all of you to come to it. We have different speakers that are going to be out there and speaking, including Mike Chapman, so I'll be giving all of you one of these flyers about this. The other thing that we'd like to talk about is that there was a town hall about the opioid overdoses and addiction awareness, and I was, I came to that, and so did a lot of other people from the public. And one thing that I've heard about that is that this town has a great deal of needles that are out there. And so our group has come up with the Bucket Brigade, and we are going to be picking up needles once a month at least to start off with. And when we were doing that, we were asked that we needed to get insurance for general liability, which, we are a small group that has just been forming, and that I started to get quotes for through insurance companies, was that at least $650 a year or higher. And he was saying that it would be closer to about the 700 mark, but could be higher than that. So I already spoke with Dan McKean about this, and I emailed you, you may have had about this, that it is quite difficult for volunteers and citizens to come up with that kind of money to get a coverage of a million dollars. So I was just wondering if it was possible that we could do a waiver or something so the notary citizens can go out there and do that. And then it helps the city, and also it helps with volunteering and people to feel good about that. So if we have to come up with that kind of money, I am inviting you to our fundraiser. It will help engage this money for us to get general liability, for us to do cleanup. It's a pour sip and paint, except for we're not going to have any alcohol involved. Art of the pie is donating all the pies to it, and we're having Rain Shadow Coffee. It's going to be at First United Methodist Church, so you can get tickets, and anybody else can get a flyer about this. And if you can't attend to that, we also have a drawing that we're going to be doing. It's Twin Geek style, so it's our painting, and we have tickets for that. They're $5 each, and there's different items that you can get for that. So thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, I need to sit.
Hi, Nellie Smith, P.O., Box 498. So last council meeting, we had a citizen from Port Angeles, Carl Rice, who complained about the alleys and wondered if he could volunteer to take care of them. In typical the government will fix it for you fashion, he was told that it's not possible, it's an insurance issue. No contemplation, no research, nothing but no. Our police use volunteers. SWIM and Port Townsend both use volunteers to maintain their parks. My daughter was 16 years old and using a lawnmower in Port Townsend to maintain a park, and I know this for sure. So I called LNI. And LNI has a volunteer coverage for cities. They said it's not actually necessary to have insurance coverage if everyone's a volunteer and they sign a waiver, but if the city opts to have coverage, road repair, painting would be in the risk pool number 6901, and the insurance cost would be seven cents an hour per volunteer. So I'm kind of confused why we would tell citizens no when the answer could be yes. People want to be involved, they want to be part of the community, and allowing them to take over some of the services that are necessary is a really great move. I think it won't break our budget. Amen? So, and then there's another thing I would like to clarify. At the last council meeting, we had a speaker who went after two of our council members and criticized them. If our procedures have changed, or we can actually wholesale call out a council member and criticize them, please let me know. Thank you.
Next up is Ingrid Karne. Ingrid Karne.
Hi, I'm Ingrid Karne, I live at 316 South Cherry. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Downey, and the City Council members for allowing me to give this short presentation. After the town hall last May, that town hall on the opioid problem in Pink Angeles, our group, the Calum Progressive Coalition, realized we could help with one of the problems associated with this addiction: needles in parks and public places. In response, we decided to work with the Department of Parks and Recreation and hold a trash needle pickup one Saturday a month. We want to make Port Angeles the best community that we can. However, we found out that the city of Port Angeles's lawyer thinks we should have a million dollars of liability insurance before we do volunteer work for the city. I understand his concern, but there's another side. How do you expect small groups of citizens to help out, to volunteer, to be involved in the pride of Port Angeles, and yet pay at least $650 per year for the privilege? Once I attended a conference on the care of parks in cities, one of the represented cities had a park that the neighborhoods surrounding it wanted to clean up the park and beautify it. The city encouraged this, not because of the free labor to save them money, but because it involved, but because it encouraged citizens involved. We are a small group of citizens. Some of us are on social security, some are unemployed and looking for work, but they usually find themselves overqualified for available jobs, and others are busy working, raising families, paying mortgages, and certainly none of us have excessive amounts of money. However, we all love this beautiful city of Port Angeles, so please reconsider the insurance requirement, and let us be involved and volunteer to help our city. I was told that Dan McKean does support volunteers. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to? Jim, please.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Last year.
Jim, please. Name it, Andrew.
Jim Buck. Last year, our county was involved with a national international earthquake exercise called Cascade Horizon. We had a very qualified, extremely experienced group of emergency management volunteers that helped repair plans for Clalow, SWIM. Those plans have gone down to, in some cases, the post office box or milepost level. They were reviewed by Ruckles House Institute from the University of Washington earlier this year. One of their findings was utilize the work of Clalow County Emergency Management as a model for emergency preparedness, planning for coastal communities, and provide support for the enhancement of the implementation of the plans. We have not been involved in Port Angeles because Port Angeles is the most difficult place in the county, and we needed to have some experience about how to go ahead and prepare plans for similar places, or places that don't have as much problems as you do. After the earthquake, well during the earthquake, you can expect to drown to shake for about five and a half minutes, and you will not be able to stand during that entire time. There will be significant damage throughout Port Angeles and the rest of Clalow County, and in fact, from the Canadian border down to the middle of California and over to the Cascade Crest. We will be on our own for up to 30 days. You can expect the tsunami to reach the corner of First and Lincoln. Anything below that will be liquefactive or washed out by the tsunami. So why I'm here today is I'm not asking for you guys to give us FTEs or money, but what I would like to do is offer to help the city train volunteers on how to coordinate a plan and put it together, so that Port Angeles can be in as good shape as works, and Clalow, May, and Joyce. Frankly, we think all the Ello River bridges are going to fall down, so you can't get to us and Joyce and get to our food, but that means we can't call you and them to help you either. So what you need to do as a sponsor, as a city council, or fire department, police department, who have all been, and Mr. McKean have all been supportive, we need to have you guys make a decision about how you can have some trusted people to go ahead and help you get ready for this, and we're willing to help train them for nothing. So, thank you very much for the call.
Thank you. Okay, we have a bit more time. Is there anyone else who would like to offer a comment? Yes, please.
We can turn on a road light. A green light. My name is Bill Actonson, I live at 1702 West Fourth Street in Port Angeles, and I want to commend Seroptimist and Cherry for recognizing and establishing Pink Angeles Week. I'm like, there's a breast cancer survivor, and I'm just thrilled to have her around, I got to tell you that. And she's a breast cancer survivor because of the science that has been involved. There's been a lot of government money, and it hasn't come out of anybody's pocket with the government to generate the protocols, you know, the surgical protocols, the chemotherapy and all of that. And I'm speaking up this evening because I want to remind the community that we don't live in a vacuum here, and 80% of the revenue at OMC comes through either Medicaid, Medicare, or some other government sponsored program. And if the current political environment in Washington has its way, they will defund the Affordable Healthcare Act, and they'll close down OMC. It'll be overwhelmed. So remember, we don't live in a vacuum. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else?
Mark Upsher.
Yes, Mark, please go forward.
Thank you, City Council, Mark Upsher, 121 East Rowan Avenue. I just really want to quickly say that I want to thank publicly the city officials, the city's team, who have supported our efforts to organize an enhanced Fourth of July experience for the community of Port Angeles. It's been a ton of work by a lot of really great citizens, a lot of great businesses supporting it. We couldn't do it though without the cooperation of Nathan's team, Cory's team. The fire department has been fantastic, and the police department is also going to be supporting us. So anyway, it's a lot of work by a lot of different people, and I'm really excited about what we're doing this year. The fireworks are going to be launched off of a barge on the day for the first time in, I think about 30 years. About 30 years ago, they used to do it off a barge, so we're returning that, and that actually ends up making fireworks that much more spectacular. And we're also changing the parade route, so that's been a lot of work to do that as well. But we're returning the parade back to the downtown area. So anyway, but you can imagine with all those things, it's going to be, you know, it's been a lot of work, but it's going to be a lot of fun. City Pier is going to be hopping, baseball, hot dogs, apple pie, and Chevrolet on the pier with three concerts during the day. And Waterfront Park, or West End Park, I'm not sure what the official name of it is, is going to be featured. Pennsyl College is invading the park with Pete the Pirate, and a lot of college students and stuff are going to be down there in the park playing, I guess, playing volleyball and a bunch of other sports down there. So, and then of course, the parade route is going right in front of that park as well. So anyway, I just really, this wouldn't have been possible without the support I've gotten from the city officials, so thank you.
Thank you. All of your answers. Okay, that concludes our 15 minute work. We appreciate all those of you who have taken the time and interest to share your thoughts. I would remind everyone that there will be a second opportunity later in our meeting this evening. That takes us to late items. Is there any item that the council would have in place of this or future? I think I see, I think three hands here, so I'm going to choose first.
I would like to get further information from Mr. Buck about emergency preparedness, maybe some packets to get from council. So I'd like to address this issue, and I'd like to take the next step, so put it on agenda right now. I think if we get some information packets to work with, so we can work toward the next step and understand what we need to do and how we can train our volunteers and be ready for an emergency, I would like to do that.
Dan?
So thank you. I'd like to speak to that same item. Jim and I have actually been working together for quite some time and have done a lot of similar training. I've gone to a couple of Zoom seminars where he puts on an instructional type of workshop that is very, very helpful and can walk us through that, this whole process of how to get things going and get involved. Very, very useful. I think it would be a really important thing for the council, and my request would be the council to have consensus to request an actual workshop, council workshop be established sometime between now and perhaps before 5:10 starts, so that this will get passed in that shuffle.
I concur.
Kind of depending on what the staff can do to that or as far as scheduling, but I think it would be worthwhile for Jim to come in 35 minutes or an hour to talk about that and then help the open to the public, so they could have an opportunity to really get firsthand information about how important this is. So I would ask staff to kind of help lead us through that.
Thank you.
All right, Sissy.
I guess I would ask about the volunteer insurance. I would like to see what we can do, you know, and what the city can afford, and what we can't afford, how we deal with volunteers, because I think that's a really important issue. We have a lot of folks that do want to volunteer, so. And then the other thing, I guess for the public, we are going to be adopting the ethics rules of the state today, so that's where the change happens.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mike and Andy.
I also, I wanted to bring up several folks that talked about the volunteer and the insurance, and I want to keep this going, and I'd like to see us sometime in the future be thinking about scheduling another town hall meeting to deal with some of these issues, and actually one of these is used to deal with, is how can volunteers help without stepping on the boundaries of Mr. Blor's, what type of insurance is needed.
Thank you, Mike. Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to actually support both of these ideas here as late items to come up in the future, the volunteerism address as well as the preparedness. So I would be full support of those coming forward. I think Mike hit on something, that a further town hall meeting would go along with the community, so I fully support that coming forward too. It actually might be another way also to discuss with the community both of these other items that we've just discussed, the volunteerism, preparedness, so as well as getting back to our needles in the parks. We've got problems in town, so I would support all those coming forward. I'd love the staff to put them together. I don't have an actual date prepared, or we would want to give the community as much time as noticed to come prepared. Thanks.
Thank you. Can you come, Mr. Dan? Before I do that, Brad, we don't want, Brad, you are there?
I'm here.
Do you have any, I don't want to ignore you.
I don't feel ignored. I do support both these things coming forward, and I'd like to thank Lee for speaking clearly into the microphone. The rest of you need to work on it.
Okay, Brad.
Okay, Brad. Is that better for me?
Okay, Brad.
That was all better, thank you.
We've been reprimanded here. So, Mr. McKean, do you clear consensus here?
Yes, I did listen to the conversation. We do have a consensus on that. We will look at putting together in a work session format the items that were discussed tonight, and what we'll do is we'll look at our pre-existing schedule that deals with budgets, and I think we have one or two other topics that the council has on the plate for work session items, but we can work these in, and we'll come back to the council with some tentative dates that we can look at.
I think this is, I think this is, it's kind of a grassroots initiative here that's happening here. And for those of you who don't, who may not know Jim Buck, Jim has, I have no idea how many years Jim, but Jim is a recognized expert in these matters. We have others here from the county that are, and this is way cool, that this way, this could happen this way, and Jim is clear that we would support your efforts, and I think some really good things will come out of this.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. So we have reached 6:30, which takes us to the need to get to public hearings. We'll bypass. We'll bypass our consent agenda for a bit of time. And vote directly to public hearings. We think there may be people here who have scheduled their evening to be here at this time to, and would hope there might be. The first public hearing, this is a continuation of public hearings held at our previous meeting, first being the wetlands protection ordinance in our package is F1. Nathan, I can start you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, you have before you this evening an ordinance to amend Section 15.24 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code. It does amend the wetlands ordinance, which is a critical area ordinance required by the state of Washington. At this point in time, there are three primary changes involved in that ordinance. We are updating the definition of wetland to align with the state definition of wetland. We are changing some references that were outdated in code that either no longer exist or have been updated. And then finally, we have modified the definition of qualified professional. And those are the three primary changes that you see in the ordinance. This was fully supported by the City Planning Commission. There was a public hearing at the planning commission level as well as a first reading conducted by city council in a public hearing at their last meeting on June 6. So tonight, staff is recommending that council be for adopting the ordinance following the public hearing this evening to see if we have any additional public testimony regarding the ordinance.
Before I open up the public hearing, is there any member of the council having a question? All right. I will open up the public hearing on the 2017 Port Angeles Municipal Code, Chapter 15.24, Wetlands Protection Amendment. Is there anyone here this evening who wishes to speak to this? This is an opportunity for you to do so. Okay. I don't know that we need to belabor the point. Doesn't look like there's anybody rushing forward here. So I will close the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, do you have... I will just... Let's go read it. Can let's move along here as quickly as possible, I suppose. Let me read the ordinance, the ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, revising Title 15, 15.24, the Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to wetlands protection. Sissy, Dan?
I was going to say I moved the document as read.
Second up.
Motion has been made and seconded. Michael and Brad, do you have any comments before we go to the question?
No, it's part of the motion. And I can tell you that the city was obligated to meet the requirements of state on this in order to continue funding another important implication of these environmental regulations.
I'm in support of it also, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, great. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Opposed, if any? As you hear in the city, I agree. Okay. Next up is the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Annual Amendment. This is a continuation of a public hearing we had at our previous meeting. This is, and the package is F10. Nathan, I believe you're back on the screen as well.
Mr. Mayor and Council, this evening, we are following through with the annual amendment of our comprehensive plan. Last year, 2016, we did do our seven-year update of the comprehensive plan. Council made a number of requests that we continue to work on the document over the next year, improving the document, ensuring that we have measurability relative to implementation of the document, looking at additional issues that came up such as document rearrangement to make it more user-friendly, but also have a web-friendly version of the document. Each of those was achieved. In addition, we have some new items that were brought to our attention following council approval of the update, one of which was to look at and reevaluate transportation level of service in the community. That's been incorporated in appendix to the comprehensive plan. And then additionally, look at some of those element revisions that can further support some of the projects that we anticipate in the community, including the Mount Angeles View Project, the Boys and Girls Club, the New Performing Arts Center, the Fair Living Life Center, and the William Short Pool Projects, each of those incorporated, which provides a level of eligibility relative to future funding for those projects, whether it be from the state or a local entity. I think it's important to mention, too, that we got some good input from city council at the last meeting. One of the primary points of input we heard loud and clear was we need more measurable level of service incorporated in the document, incorporated in the process, recognizing that this is really the foundational document for the city of Port Angeles as we move forward with the direction of implementing the public's vision for the community over the next 20 years. As part of that, we worked to make sure that we had a document that was a distilled version or a smaller version of the comprehensive plan that really focused on that implementation. So what staff did was we actually combined some of those primary objectives that city council has established, including the strategic plan, some of the components of the AIA study, as well as those objectives that were approved in the comprehensive plan last year, and incorporated them all in one matrix where we actually added three columns to that matrix where you have an action that describes what the actual measurable outcome will be, a date that it would be completed, and whether it's been complete or not. So you actually see that in a separate document that is intended to be much more user-friendly in your DAS so that when the public wants to know more about what's actually being implemented in the comprehensive plan and how that's being implemented, that document is there before you. It is in draft form. There's a great deal more work that needs to be done to that document. And the goal would be to have it completely updated with levels of service for each department in October of this year. So those are some steps that staff took to try to make things better relative to concerns that council raised at the last meeting. And at this point, staff is recommending adoption of the comprehensive plan and the ordinance that implements that comprehensive plan this evening following consideration of public testimony during the public hearing this evening. I do want to mention one additional component, and that is the implementation strategy that you have before you. We will also be emailing that out to council candidates probably tomorrow.
That's a great idea. Sissy?
So as you all know, I've been pretty focused on this comprehensive plan. It's been, I truly believe that this is the most important plan for the whole city. I mean, without this, we really have no goal. We're just kind of reacting to what's going on. And so when we first came up with the modified comprehensive plan, I must admit I was very disappointed because there was very little as to implementation and measurables. So and I've been working with staff. I was very grateful for some of the updates that were there because they cleaned up quite a lot. And there was a umpteen number of policies in place that were very vague. So a lot of the vagueness has been pulled out. And so I guess I want to tell you what I am doing and working with staff to try and make this comprehensive plan better. So one of the things I've done is I've gone through each of the sections. So far, I've gone through two. There's seven sections, two sections, and kind of tried to pull out from every policy, because every policy has an outcome. There's a reason why we have a policy, because we want some kind of outcome out of it. So if we have some kind of an outcome out of it, we should measure that outcome. So trying to put measurables to every one of those policies. So the idea is that with the policy, with the measurables that have been added from the AIA and from other areas from the comprehensive plan, plus those, I think we'll have a really good set of measurables. So working with staff, I think that this implementation strategy, when it gets completed in October with the work of the staff that's doing, especially getting to the levels of service, I think it's going to be really, really wonderful for the city. One of the things that, going through the comprehensive plan, there's a lot of policies in there that I'm not even sure we may want in there, but they're there right now. And it came out of a citywide, I guess, comprehensive ask to the citizens of, you know, what is it that you want to do? So I think once we have the measurables, I think we can take a really good look and say, okay, now with these measurables, is that really leading us to where we want to go? So at first, I was very hesitant to pass this because it just really did not meet the level that I thought the city needed. With the promise of staff to get this implementation done by October, so in our, I think it's the second week in October, we will be having a work session on this. And this implementation strategies with all the level of services will be completed by then. So that was the promise, that this will be completed by all departments. And I, you know, that's actually really hard. For the first time, things are going to be really measured. And then you can actually say, hmm, are we meeting what we want to do? And if you think about it, grading yourself, you know, can be really hard to do. But it's always good for us to know where we are at and what level of service we expect. If our roads are really terrible, is it because staff's doing a terrible job? Or is it because we're not giving the budget items to protect those roads? So then that becomes a policy issue here. Do we put the budget to get the roads done? Or do we, you know, what is the reason why our roads are so bad? So at least we can get to measure where our roads are or not. So with that said, I am grateful, grateful, grateful to staff to see this implementation strategy and knowing that we're going to have this discussion again in October so that hopefully come November, you know, with the input of council and the input, you know, this ideally will end up also on the web. So you can see it and take a look and see if there's things in there that are missing, if things in there that really don't make sense. Or can we combine these three to make one? So ideally, this will be a living document, a document that gets modified often, and that it actually takes us to our vision for the future. So with that, I will support passing this comprehensive plan because we will be working on it this whole next year. I could tell you, once we get this right, it'll make, I think, it'll be really clear for everybody to know where Port Angeles is going for the next 20 years.
Brad or Michael, do you have any comments before I open up the public hearing?
We'll wait till after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. I will see, okay, so let me open up the public hearing. Regarding the second, this is the second, we'll have the second reading shortly, but regarding the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Annual Amendment, anyone wishing to speak to this matter, this is your opportunity.
Rachel Lee, 3124 South Peabody, Port Angeles. And I am just happy that as a citizen of Port Angeles, I am behind this comprehensive plan. I love the idea of it, and I like having the measurable goals to see where we're at. And I hope that it does pass and that we move forward with this because it's a wonderful idea to have goals for us to do and then to have those benchmarks there for us to see what we need to improve on, how we can get there, what are the issues that are involved with it, because it also gives us that credibility of how people are doing their jobs. I know it was a lot of work on everybody's part. And the city has done a great job in doing that. Employees have done marvelous at putting this forward and same with citizens. So I am one of the citizens that I'm saying, I hope this goes forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Melissa, VO Box 2498. The one thing that I'm not seeing in the comprehensive plan that I would very much like to see is exploration of private-public partnerships, which feeds right into the volunteerism. But in some cases, we've lost some city services that I think shouldn't have been lost, like the after-school care. And I think we could have looked at some sort of partnership within private citizens to use our facilities to continue this on. And I'm not seeing any of that. That's my biggest criticism of it. I think measuring it is absolute. We can't know how we're doing unless we know how to measure things. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Is there anyone else who uses to speak on the comprehensive plan? Okay, seeing none, I will close the... Let me read the ordinance, second reading. An ordinance of the city of Port Angeles, Washington, adopting amendment to the comprehensive plan.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Brad.
I would like to move the adoption of the ordinance as read. And I would like to say that I think it's really important to work with other public agencies or entities like the pool and help them move forward, too. So I'm glad to see us working together.
And I'll second that motion of Brad's.
Okay. All right. That motion has been brought forward, it's been seconded. Any further comments? Michael, do you have any comments?
No, I'm in support of this. I was trying to put you on mute. I'm in the airport and it's very noisy, so I'll keep my comments limited. But I'm in support of this. I agree with Sissy with the measurables and that this is a great step forward. And we can always continue to keep working on this.
Do you have any more kids?
Yes, I fully support passing the comprehensive plan tonight. And I would like to thank staff for listening to council and coming up with the extra implementation strategy. I, it appears a lot of work went into this. And I just think we have a staff that goes above and beyond when they listen to our needs and work with us because we're all working together for the good of the community. So thank you, staff. I really appreciate the improvements.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to make a couple of comments. First, I'd like to thank staff for such a great job in improving a pretty decent document to start with to what you have today. I agree with Sissy. The measurables are a real key. I was speaking fairly favorably at the last meeting because I was pretty happy to see 37 very specific measurables in the plan. Tonight, we're up to 75 measurables. And I think that's a great head in the right direction. I wanted to thank the hundreds and hundreds of Port Angeles citizens that contributed to this and all the workshops, all the opportunities that were made available for them to give their opinions. The seven of us did not sit down and make this stuff up. It came from the citizens of Port Angeles and massaged by the consultants and the staff and along with our input. So I think that was really commendable of the citizens to do that and to have such involvement. And in supporting of this, I also just want to make sure that people don't think that just because we're approving this or probably approving this now, that we haven't been measuring things in the past. There's been an awful lot of probably more informal levels of measurement. We've measured our financial services, our response times for police and fire, the heads and beds for lodging taxes. There's consistent measuring and looking over to see what's going on in the city. And we have been able to judge to a great degree that in many, many cases, we've made fabulous strides of improvement. This will make that even much better. And the extra measurables and detail, I think, will make us all a better city.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could I add one more comment?
Sure.
I'd like to add the idea that I think it's quite, just like with hazardous, hazard planning, I think in the future, we're going to have to look more at healthcare in general and public healthcare in particular. And I think that we need to see that as a responsibility of local government and the federal government to step federal government is not going to be doing this. And I, I want to go back to Mr. Actonson's comments and think that this is something that we may end up having to do more about.
Okay.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just want to make just a couple more comments. One, I absolutely want to thank Mr. McKean for really, when asking the staff about the level of service, to really also look at what are those things that we need to measure that are going to really make a difference. And I think that's the critical part, you know, which are the ones that make a huge difference? That's key. We can measure everything, but that that really makes a difference is really special. So I appreciate that. And the second, if we can have this so that we can, for our old eyes, nothing less than 12-point, I would really, really appreciate it. Here, here.
All right, there is a motion on the, move forward and second it. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 It sounds like a patchy manner of speaking.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just pass along great appreciation to Chief Dubuque, who actually created the level of service template for the implementation strategy document, and also pass along appreciation to Allison Barack, our planning manager and C D staff, who worked really hard to make sure this project was finished and completed on time.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's take a step back and we'll go back to the item E on our agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there any item on the four items appearing on the consent agenda that a member of the council would want to pull off for further discussion?
Mayor and council?
If I could just speak before you vote on one of the items very quickly. So on E4, which is changing the council meeting date due to the July 4th holiday, and of course, that would be moved to July 5th. If you could make a friendly amendment to that, there is a chance, I know a couple council members expressed their concern that they won't be available for that meeting. Right now, we have one very minor item that's scheduled to go on the agenda, which usually we have quite a few more than that for an upcoming council meeting. If in fact, we have nothing of any substance that can't wait until the next council meeting, we could in fact cancel that council meeting. And I would know about three, four days ahead of time to get adequate notice out to the public and the media. But if you make that, that would have to be a council authorization, but there is a chance that rather than have an agenda with very few things on it, some council members missing, we could cancel. But again, we may have things that we need to move forward, and we'll just have to wait and see. But at this point, it looks pretty favorable. And I can tell you, you're going to have a pretty heavy second half of the year, not just with council meetings, but numerous work sessions, including multiple budget work sessions.
All right. Do you have any mayor kids?
It makes sense to look at that. I know I'll be out of state with my family, and it's just, it's just a family holiday. It's very difficult to prepare for a council meeting if we can rush back. So I just think it would be advisable to look and see what's available and if it's not absolutely necessary to have a meeting with just a few members, that maybe we can trust on that mindedness. So I, thank you. I appreciate it, Mr. McKean, and I look forward to your decision.
Okay. All right.
I'd also like to pull out the item with regards to the purchase of the service truck for a brief discussion.
All right. With that leaves two.
Did we actually pull number four?
We haven't really pulled number four.
No, no, we did pull number four.
So I guess we already have three. First, the city council amendments, May 16th through June 6th, 2017. Expenditure report from May 27th through June 9th, 2017, in the amount of $1,315,522.15. And a change in council meeting date due to July 4th holiday.
So move the agenda as read.
Second.
Would that include the?
With changes.
Change in to number four?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
To leave it to the discretion of our city manager to assist with actual meeting. Okay, all those in favor of items one, two, and four? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those in favor? So let's go back to three, equipment replacement light operation service truck number 138. Daniel, if you have a question that concerns?
Okay, just a comment. I'm going to be voting in favor of this purchase, but in the future, I would like to see a little bit more specific information with regards to the vehicle that is going out of service versus the one that's coming into service. I know many years ago, when I first started, we talked about the fact that vehicles can grow. They start out with a little bitty pickup truck, and then they get replaced with a bigger truck, and pretty soon you've got an F-450 six-pack going and so on and so forth. I think Manager McKean brought that up to us, and I don't see that in this case. But what I would love to do is be able to make a little bit easier comparison as to the vehicle that we got and what it is now versus what it's going to be replaced with. We've had these same kind of discussions, I think, with, whether it be the dump truck and a fire truck, I'm pretty sure, in the past. And so just a little extra clarification to make our decision-making process based upon a little more information.
Absolutely, and thank you.
So I make a motion that we approve and authorize the city's manager to purchase a new service truck through Washington State Purchasing Contract for $66,800, including sales tax and vehicle accessories, and to make minor modifications to the contract if necessary.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Yeah, Brad or Michael, do you have any further comments or questions?
No. No, I don't.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 All those in favor? Brad, by the way, are we speaking better, more clearly for you?
You guys are doing great. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Today's dinner, I have plane attached now, so I will be part in this meeting.
Well, thank you for joining us. Where, what airport are you at?
I am in Las Vegas.
And how hot, how hot is it in Las Vegas?
115 degrees.
And you're coming home to 60 degrees.
That's good thing.
All right, have a safe.
Thank you.
Have a safe trip.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, that gets us to ordinance is not requiring a public hearing. That would be, as the ethics ordinance revision, this is packet G1.
Thank you. This is the second reading of this ordinance. Previously, this ordinance.
Bill, I don't know if your mic is on right here. You seem unusually low.
Try it now.
That's better.
Oh, okay. So this is the second reading of this ordinance. Previously, the council held a work session on the subject matter of this ordinance, and then it was discussed at a regular council meeting. After that, following council meeting, there was the first reading of the ordinance. Since then, I've had no comments or feedback from anyone on council or anyone else, with the exception that several people reported to me that there was one typo found in the ordinance, and that has been corrected in tonight's draft. So I have really nothing further to add to that. So this would be for second reading and consideration of approval of the ordinance.
Okay, any other members of the council?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bloor, I've got a couple of questions. Because we're going to go to state standards on an ethics code by city council members, for the record, I guess, for knowledge actually of the community, any future ethics charges will be referred to the county auditor?
County auditor, no. There are several methods that could be used if there are future charges. First of all, the city itself can take action, which is in the ordinance. Second, violations can be reported to the state auditor. They have a compliance division in the state auditor's department who specifically looks at compliance of city officials and elected official compliance with ethics provisions. They could also be reported to the state attorney general. They will, the attorney general will also do investigations. And finally, on some of these ordinances, a citizen or another person believes there is a violation, they can bring a direct action and sue your court. So there are several ways that these could be addressed in the future.
So is there any local contact then, other than the city and a private attorney to bring action by a citizen? Meaning back to the state auditor or state attorney general's office?
I'm not sure I follow. There's no county office, is that, that's what you're asking? Is that?
Yeah, that's, I'm asking again for a local contact from a state agencies, point to accept an ethics charge.
Well, there are local branches of the attorney general and of the state auditor departments.
That's what I'm trying to establish. I've got one other question also. By this, I think we're going to adopt tonight, how does this affect our current citizens' volunteer ethics board?
Well, it basically eliminates the current board. That the current board is, was formed under the current ordinance, and by going back to the state ordinance, that is repealed.
Thank you.
Any further, Brad, you're with us?
I'm with you. I'm waiting for you to read the ordinance.
I'm going to do it in about five seconds. An ordinance to the city of Port Angeles wants you to amend the chapter 2.78 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to the Code of Ethical Conduct. And this is the second reading.
Make a motion to accept the ordinance as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further comments, questions? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? I don't think there's anybody that isn't in favor. Thank you, everybody. And Bill, thank you for your help. Second ordinance to not require a public, a public hearing this evening is the Park Improvement Plan, that's in our package G15.
Good evening, mayor and council. As I mentioned in the first reading, the city is looking to change the name of the Lincoln Park Improvement Fund to just Park Improvement Fund. This will give us a revenue account that has more flexibility to it instead of creating a new account. So tonight, I am recommending that council, in that the second reading adopted ordinance amended in chapter 3.15.020, Port Angeles Municipal Code.
I can go ahead and read this, we can expedite this if needed. So let me read the ordinance, second reading. An ordinance to the city of Port Angeles, Washington, amend in chapter 3.15 of the City Municipal Code related to funds.
Motion to approve the ordinance is read.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any further comments or questions? Brad, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to talk about how we're going to set this fund up. Why would we want to, or is it current policy to allow the Parks and Rec Department head to have the discretion of directing money for these parks? It's not previously identified.
I believe what the fund is for is so if people want to donate to the Lincoln Park or they want to donate to Francis Street Park or some other park, it is, the monies go directly to those parks.
So that would only occur during, or actually after a donation has been made yet not directed to a particular park?
So, so the account is created to take in revenue, whether it's a donation or it's a revenue of an agreement like we have with the Los Angeles Lefties. And that money goes into, let's say, all that money is going to, back into civic field so that we can have future improvements for capital projects, much like the Lincoln Park Improvement Fund was for funding that was coming in from the trees being taken down and was to basically just set it for that park. What we want to do is have it so we can use it for multiple parks instead of setting up other accounts.
I guess what I'm more concerned about, Corey, is that if someone is to donate money for a particular park, I guess that, that this allows that policy to be in place and yet not have oversight only controlled by Parks and Rec Department. I just, I'm thinking if a, a blind amount of money comes in and yet we're not as policymakers able to direct this funding to what we think is a priority as being elected officials. That's my concern there.
So I believe I can answer that question. When you approve this, what you're approving is you're expanding the definition of what the funds can be used for. It was limited to Lincoln Park in the past, but there are other parks that people may want to donate to, as well as, like Corey said, there's revenue coming in through the use of that park that could go back to the park. The important thing, though, and I think that answers your question directly, is that it doesn't bypass any of the spending policies that we have. It still requires the authorizations that we currently have in place for any other spending. If in fact, somebody donated money for a specific purpose, we want to honor that. But if it falls within, outside of the spending authority that staff currently has, it would go to council, and those things would be identified when it was brought to council. But again, it doesn't bypass any of the spending controls and the council authorizations that are in place for any other spending.
Thank you, Manager McKean. I'd just like to point out to the community, what's in part of our summary is that it does read, "Any other donation or monies received and placed into the account could be applied to any park at the discretion of the Parks and Recreation Director." The problem I have with that is at the discretion of the Parks and Recreation Director. Understanding it comes to advisory committees and other policy already on the books, and I'll be in full support of this. I just, when I see that we're giving discretionary powers to a particular department without oversight, then I become concerned.
So I'd like to add too, is, is most of the time, I'd say all the time, this type of money goes for capital projects that's already approved by the council in CFP. It has to come back through for council approval anyways. So ultimately, it gets back to council.
Okay. Brad, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm fully supportive of this.
Okay, I'm going to read the, read this and move on here. An ordinance to the city of Port Angeles, Washington, amend in chapter 3.15 of the Port Angeles Municipal Code relating to funds.
Move the ordinance as read.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone. That takes us to item I, other considerations of 2017, 2018, redevelopment area, facade improvement program. This is item I, the one in our packet this evening. Nathan West is the spokesperson.
Mr. Mayor and council, this evening, staff is bringing forward a recommended focus area. In accordance with the Port Angeles Municipal Code, staff may recommend to council for council approval of a designated area where the cap on the facade improvement program is actually lifted, where we can... is actually lifted, where we can allow for awards that are greater than the typical $10,000 cap. I think it's important to point out that our average award is probably around $6,000 for each of the projects put forward. In this particular instance, we really focused looking at the commercial corridors throughout the city. These commercial corridors are where we have designated the facade grant to be focused on, basically. Any commercials on property, predominantly the First and Front Street corridors, as well as the downtown area, really focused on those. The overall goal is to improve the property values and assessed value of those areas and those particular properties that we're partnering with to help with improvements, but also to improve the visibility of the public realm. It was really important to staff that we are making some substantial investments in the downtown area, as well as in that corridor area, particularly with the new capital project along Way Street. And we really wanted to make sure that the private sector has the ability to step out and improve the facades along this corridor. The recommended area this evening is to focus on Laurel Street, from Laurel Street to Race Street on First Street. And that really is a corridor. If you take a look at it, it needs some help. We really need to work on those property values. We need to bring them up. We'd really like to see some enhancements in that corridor. So that's staff's recommendation this evening. Again, we do have fund balance available to make this happen. The grants are competitive. They are approved by planning commission. Any funding dollar amount that exceeds $25,000 will come back for council approval.
But, Deputy Mayor, if you could...
Thank you, Mr. West. This is one of the most efficient and successful programs the city administers, and I really appreciate the thought and foresight that goes into it. We need to help our small businesses be successful, and the appearance of a business is crucial. And so I think this benefits everyone. It benefits the business, it benefits the community by uplifting the facades of so many businesses. I can't, I can't tell you how many hundreds of businesses have taken advantage of this, but I know I've gotten feedback from businesses that have utilized this and made tremendous improvements to the property and the community has noticed and has appreciated. So I'm very much in favor of this, and I'm glad to see this focus because that is an area that we need to focus on. So I'm very much in favor of this and appreciate the improvements in our community. Thank you.
Mr. West, could you describe how you'll bring this information out to the business community for us?
Well, I won't say council, that that's something that we haven't fully decided on yet, but certainly we will get the word out. We were successful in doing that in the past when we had Marywood Avenue being the focus area, and we will be certain to get that word out, make sure it's publicized on our website as well as advertised in the newspaper. I believe past practice, we actually advertise both in the newspaper and on the radio, just to make sure word really got out of the competitive opportunity that's out there. I should mention too, that when an entity does ask for a dollar amount that's in excess of $10,000, staff will actually get involved in the design process. So we have an opportunity to really build something that benefits the overall community.
So I have got a question as to this redevelopment area. Is there any reason why we don't just identify all the areas that we want to redevelop and then allow? Because I would suspect that different store owners or, you know, small business owners may be ready for facade improvements at different times, rather than when that specific section comes open for redevelopment?
Well, let me say that the overall program is open to any commercial district citywide at this point. It will remain open, still on a competitive basis, just like it does on an annual basis. The value of the focus areas is that it enables staff to really look at buildings that may be in need of improvement, but look at property values, look at vacancies that are occurring in that corridor. And we really want to change that picture, and we think by focusing one area at a time and providing a big lift in that one designated area, it will make some really solid change in a short period of time.
And approximately how many grants, I guess, how many requests for grants come in versus how many grants are available?
We receive about seven grant applications each year, and probably at the end of the year, we probably approve at least six of them. So about six out of seven get through.
Pretty decent odds, and so we really should encourage as many businesses to apply for this.
Correct.
In an effort to get the word out as best as possible, since we're dealing with a very limited area from Laurel Street up to Race, just along First, a very finite number of property owners there that have buildings, perhaps a letter could be sent out to those individual property owners, just in the event that they don't happen to check the website or see it from some other, some other area, that might be helpful.
We'll certainly, certainly explore that option, and it may be just as efficient for us to go door to door.
Again, for clarification, as I understand, the emphasis will be this quarter, but that does not mean a business owner living anywhere within the city limits, who wishes to make some improvement to their facade, should not hesitate to call our city finding, our community development officer, Nathan or Allison, and submit an application. This has been a highly, market shaking, this is my partner, actually, J. Rick Collins. This has been a highly successful program. There've been several downtown shopkeepers, and I think you can't help but hear this. Some storefronts have been approved, and that improvement has come via this program. So if there are any of you in the audience who know a close in your association or wish to take advantage of this facade grant improvement program, you're not excluded. I mean, this is a, this is a clear way to step up our game.
Mr. Mayor, in light of that, I'd make a motion that we authorize the designation of First Street from Laurel Street to Race Street as specified 2017 to 2018 redevelopment area.
Aye, second that motion. Here, here.
Motion's been made and seconded. Anyone wishing to make a further comment from the council, Brad?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, well, let's do it. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? It's by the same side. Passes unanimously. Okay, that takes us to contracts and contracts and purchasing, the landfill engineering professional services agreement with Aspect Consulting. This is in our package J-1. I do not see Craig Fulton here. I do, though, see somebody who's new to our community. This is, here, is yourself. Oh, there you are.
My name is Teresa R. Jennings. I'm the new city engineer. I have been here for almost three weeks. I'm very happy to be here. Council members, Mr. Mayor, as you all know, the city continues to manage the Port Angeles landfill since its closure in 2008. Due to the complexity of the site, the city utilizes the services of a specialized solid waste engineering firm to assist us in this process. Before you for consideration and approval is a five-year professional services agreement with Aspect Consulting. I've asked our soon-to-be-retired engineering manager, Catherine Neal, who was instrumental in the successful completion of the recent bluff cell stabilization project at the landfill, to give us a brief presentation.
Thank you, Teresa. And, Mayor, city council, I'm very happy to be here tonight. This is just a short explanation. We're actually here to ask you to approve the signing of a five-year contract for landfill engineering services with Aspect Consulting. So just a little bit of background, the municipal solid waste permit really drives the scope of the engineering services that are needed at the landfill. And it also, in this case, is going to drive the duration of that contract. The permit was post-closure law, starting in 2008, when we stopped receiving waste at the landfill. Then, when we discovered that we had an issue with a lack of stability of our floor cell, in other words, we saw garbage hanging over the bluff, then the permit went into active landfill status so that we could do those remedial actions and finish the project. So here, the before and after pictures of the project. Basically, from 2011, when we first discovered the problem, until 2016, when construction was complete, we were working with the Rara Environmental Consultants for Design, and then with Magnus Pacific to build that. And the project resulted in profound changes at the site, and those changes are reflected in what we now have, which is a post-closure permit again. So, post-closure, everything is stable, and we're just managing the site, act in during the project, and now post-closure again. Through all that time, since 2008, Aspect Consulting was our landfill engineering support, and they've done a great job. They've really been responsive, they've shown that they have depth with experience and different kinds of expertise than what we have on site. They've got the groundwater chemistry experience, they have a geomorphologist on site, they have people who have lots of experience with different landfill cover systems, just to name a few. So, I think most of you are pretty familiar with the project, but of course, the big thing is taking about 400,000 cubic yards of solid waste and asbestos-containing material away from this part of the landfill, away from the eroding bluff, and putting it up on the 351 cell with the brand-new artificial turf cover. And that means that this part of the site is now free to erode. That's clay material that can go onto the bluff or onto the beach, and we can just let that work as it wishes. So I'll kind of get into a few details of the systems, just because it's reflected in the scope that we need on this engineering contract. So, that permit regulates these activities for each of the systems on the site. So we've got monitoring, inspection and maintenance, which is basically done by our own operations staff, reporting and record keeping. The things that really need to be supported with special engineering expertise are, for instance, the groundwater monitoring, and that you see is the biggest item in the task list on Table 1 in your memo. So, these are all different facilities that those activities happen over, so you can kind of see a matrix going there. I've highlighted in bold all of the activities that were modified because of the project. You can see that it's pretty comprehensive, and this is indeed a very comprehensive permit. When we look at the site, it's more interesting to look at the picture of the site when we talk about what systems are new. Cover systems, of course, the artificial turf on the 351 cell, very significant, we don't have experience with that. So far, it's working great. We had a little concern that we'd have problems with stormwater, because of course we had more runoff, because that's an previous surface where it used to be grass. And we also wondered about that sand ballast. But so far, we haven't seen any problems in the ditches or downstream stormwater. And then, of course, this is another sort of cover system, the mechanically reinforced earth wall. That is completely a result of seismic stability analysis, because there is a cell of garbage behind that wall. Of course, the garbage isn't very cohesive, so if there's ever an earthquake, that would probably let go. Now, it probably won't. It's designed to the seismic stability standards that are in the WAC, so we needed to do that, actually, to be in compliance. Then, we've got the groundwater monitoring facilities, and there are some changes there. We removed a groundwater monitoring well that was on the beach as part of the project, and instead we have a new groundwater monitoring well up here on the 304 cell. And that gives us better results, because unfortunately, the wells on the beach were compromised because they're on the beach in a high-energy environment, and because they were subject to saltwater erosion. So, then the landfill gas facilities, of course, they're completely changed. No landfill gas facilities in this area anymore. Some modifications here in the garbage that's behind the seawall, and of course, new systems in the new garbage that was placed on the 351. Leachate management is a similar situation. The leachate basically is collective pipes in that line cell, and then there's a pump station that conveys that out to the edge of the site, out here, pump station two, and then to just the sewer system, and it's treated in the wastewater treatment plant on the other side of town. But right on the site, we need to make sure that our separate ports are in order and that we have that system working correctly. Stormwater management is actually via a separate permit, but everything is integrated on the site. So Clonan County Environmental Health is really interested in every activity that happens on the site. And it happens that with the landfill cell stabilization project, we're getting less pollution in the stormwater ditch, which is interesting. It's a side benefit of the artificial turf. Then we have the shoreline features, and I have another picture here that shows that part of the site a little bit more clearly. We actually, of course, improved the end of the seawall so that we wouldn't get any end around by the wave action, and we did that by putting these little perpendicular additional walls on that seawall, and we were able to keep the footprint of the rock the same, which is really important, and minimizing impacts to aquatic resources. The monitoring and reporting on the beach is therefore reduced from what it was pre-project. We can go ahead and let this erode. The work that we did in the first seven years of this permit documenting changes in the beach morphology and what was going on with the wall, we did some sea macroalgae surveys, so we're basically an ecological survey of the seaweed in front of the wall. We did that twice. That cost about almost $60,000 each time. Now we don't have to do that. So we're saving some money in some ways, but we have additional activities in other ways. So, the contract is basically, now let's go back to this, the contract that we're proposing has been structured so that we've got separate tasks for the deliverables that we know that we need to provide, and then it has support tasks for issues that may come up on the site. For instance, the landfill gas system. Right now, the superintendent is noticing that the flare is going out to 311. So then Peter Danister, a P.E. with Aspect Engineering, will come out and take a look at that and help us troubleshoot that, and maybe make some recommendations. Maybe we have to speed up the implementation of a capital facilities project that we have to replace that flare, or maybe there's another solution. So that's an idea of the store things that we're working with Aspect Engineering. And as I would say, both in terms of the expertise that they demonstrated and their experience on this particular landfill, they really are eminently qualified. And I do believe that the reason that Neal got one submitted in response to our request for proposals, this engineering community was kind of aware of it. They went through this very exciting and dramatic period of this landfill and performed well in response to a wide variety of issues, including, they actually were subcontracted to the Rara engineers, and they actually designed that MRA wall. So they really do have tremendous qualifications. Are there any questions?
Good evening, Catherine. Could you speak about, I just saw this presentation a week ago, maybe you could speak, if you would please, referring to our UIC, that this came through them and favorable, we want to recognize volunteers. I mentioned this last, two weeks ago to council, that I think we really need to, as policymakers, we really need to go out of our way to recognize our volunteers that serve on all our various committees. And I really appreciate staff when these things go through the actual advisory committees, whether they're arts, or utilities, or something else, that we recognize our volunteers that are part of this community. So I just want to give some reference to.
Well, and it's true, I gave an expanded version of this presentation to the utility advisory committee, and we had a long discussion about it. The committee did ultimately forward a favorable recommendation that the council go ahead and follow through and improve the contract. But you're right, there's quite a lot of interest and great questions who are asked by that committee. Three of those members are here on the council, but the other members, if you would say, are volunteers. Mr. Atkinson is right there.
Thank you.
Brad, you obviously couldn't see the presentation, do you have any comments or questions?
It accomplished so much and protected our environment from what could have been a disastrous situation if it wasn't fixed when it was fixed. I would hope that we could schedule after the completion walk-through to see the finished product, I think would be really interesting, but great job all the way around.
Thank you.
Well, I agree with that, it was a great job, and I also want to thank you so much for your whole, for all the service to the city. We really, really appreciate it. We're sorry to see you go, but I know you're going to have a great time when you return, and so thank you, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you so much. You know, it's really been an honor to serve my own town, I have enjoyed that tremendously.
That's a nice segue.
How much we appreciate you, she's retiring, and we all... For so many years, Mr., prior to Mr. Fulton, Mr. Cutler, he had a difficult engineering issue with the council. He would always send Catherine out, with her pleasant manner and smile, and her way of explaining things to us so well, and it worked. I know you had a relationship. We had a long relationship, I know you need her.
I would have to say that, I didn't realize you were retiring, just before I came to the meeting to see me. And I've seen Catherine make presentations before the staff and members of the State Department of Ecology. Catherine has a, I call it a trap door in my brain, she retains information that other people rely on, because they can't do it. Catherine, if you were, if I, if you were an employee, you'd blow your mind, I wouldn't let you retire.
I've got plans.
I say that somewhat facetiously, but the fact of the matter is, there's, you know, in any business, and the city is a business, it is dependent upon people like Catherine, who are committed to doing a great job every day, staying active hours, becoming so knowledgeable about the topic, the assignment, whatever it may be. I've always seen you as a person who just makes, makes a commitment, follows through, stays there, you're, you're, you have very big shoes to fill, and I wish, we all wish extremely well on your, I don't know what, you may go off to the museum or something.
No, I'm going to stay right where I'm living, I'll be here on the peninsula, and I'm going to just take a break, turn a page, and kind of hit the reset button, and then I'll decide on my next step. But I just thank you from the bottom of my heart.
Well, we thank you from heart, you've been an extremely valuable and important employee.
And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to authorize the city manager to sign the landfill post-closure consulting services professional services agreement with Aspect Consulting in an amount not to exceed $115,000 in year one, and $670,500 over the five-year life of the contract, and to make minor modifications to the agreement as necessary.
Second.
I'll pass it on to the second, motion's been made and seconded. Any further comments or questions, hearing, all those that are there for the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. I'll pass it unanimously.
Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you so much.
So Catherine, before you leave, and Mayor and Council, just a couple of words that I want to add, and I couldn't do a better job than the council did, but I do want to recognize Catherine, not only from the standpoint of city staff, city council, and the community, but Catherine actually has gained a reputation outside of Port Angeles, and specifically, the landfill bluff stabilization project was one of the things that she has made multiple presentations on. And I need to go back a little ways, because it's one thing to deal with the technical aspects that some of us have a hard time wrapping our arms around, and Catherine does an excellent job of helping us do that when we're late people like myself. But Catherine was instrumental as one of our staff members in helping us acquire, helping the city acquire $4 million from the Department of Ecology as initial financial assistance towards the landfill bluff stabilization project. And the reason, one of the main reasons, that they felt comfortable providing that financial assistance, which was one of the biggest, one of the biggest grants, and it really wasn't a grant, it was financial assistance, that any city received during that budget period, they did it because they felt that staff did a credible and competent job in explaining what the issues were, the need for it, the benefits to the community, in a way that everybody could understand, and Ecology was very supportive. But that's not the end of the story. We got our $4 million, which again, was one of the biggest financial assistance contributions, which was outside of the box, they normally don't even do it for this type of activity. Then, when the next budget period came, we knew we needed some additional money for post-closure, and that's what we're talking about tonight, is post-closure requirements. Well, we put in for an additional $2.2 million. Department of Ecology didn't have us high on their list, because they already gave us four, which was a very high amount for anybody to receive. But through the hard work of staff, and specifically Catherine's presentations, we did eventually acquire the $2.2 million that is going directly to post-closure. And the benefit is not only to the citizens of Port Angeles, the landfill really affects just about every citizen in Clougham County, with the exception of the far west end of the county. So, we really appreciate Catherine, and by the way, Mayor, she is your employee, just so you know that.
I have to say it carefully.
For a few more days anyways. Catherine, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have to say that $2.2 million, that Dan has not given himself enough credit for that, the city manager played a key role in that. So thank you all.
Okay, that takes us to council reports. Brad, you've been really great in this last couple of weeks. I'm going to start off with you today for your council.
Okay. Well, my report is that I left the middle of Ohio after a long trip there over the last day, and I'm returning to the middle of Pennsylvania, and I'm in a nice quiet truckyard underneath a cell tower, and I'm only about halfway back, so I still have about three hours to go. So I might just call it an evening if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, and I add my congratulations and best wishes to Catherine.
Drive safely.
Okay, thanks, Pat. Bye-bye.
Take care. I'll meet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to report to the community that July 1st is a Saturday, and that is the Saturday that we all man the farmer's market, and July 1st will be my turn. I'm anticipating making it, but I live for July 1st personally, because of Dungeon S. crabbing and salmon season opens, so I'm going to be hitting the water shortly thereafter, but got to make time to listen to the community, so if you've got anything you'd like to discuss with me, I'd be there for two hours from 10 to 12 Saturday morning. Thank you.
Three quick items. First, I attended the Chamber Commerce Board meeting last week, and I'm sorry that Mark left before I had a chance to compliment him, the chamber's really making great progress, but in special emphasis, this time period, working on the 4th of July parade and all the activities, all the volunteers from around town that are joining in on that effort, I think it's going to be just a spectacular event for everybody. Second, I had a chance to participate briefly in the National Guard and Sheriff's Department exercise at the airport, we can go Saturday. We were hosts to members of the Royal Thai Army, and that had flown over here in a black cocked, and I heard that come across town, and had represented us from the port and the emergency management system, and myself from the city council, and they were very gracious, and really enjoyed the opportunity to be here in Port Angeles, even if it was just for a brief time. And then finally, I have to put in a plug for the Wings of Freedom salute to Veterans Tour, that this begins tomorrow. Bombers are due to arrive about noon, four different vintage World War II aircraft, wonderful opportunity to share a bit of history with family and friends, and especially with kids, to see what it was really like back in the old days, and to see what some of that equipment was like, and some of the stories, especially from the vets. So that'll be going on for a few days. Tomorrow is emphasis with the late afternoon, we have the Coast Guard helicopter coming in for a static display at the airport, there's a rock and roll band, there's a car show, there's a double-A fuel dragster out there, there's Red Lion catering, a barbecue dinner, and just a lot of stuff going on, it should be a really fun event for the public. Thanks.
Yes, I'd like to talk about July 1st, Saturday, it's Canada Day, and I, once again this year, I'm leading a group of local citizens over for Canada Day. We have been invited by the city council of Victoria to be their guests, and so what we do is we take the 8:15 Coho ferry over, and then we go to the legislative lawn, they have, they make a big outline of the maple leaf for about 3,000 or more citizens, they give away a red or white T-shirt. People stand in line for hours to get the T-shirts, however, they set aside those specifically for their guests from Port Angeles. And then they places, we'll have red T-shirts on for Canada Day, and then they'll place it in the maple leaf, and then they have all the newspapers in Canada, and all the TV stations, and they have a fire truck, and they go up in the ladder truck, and they take pictures of everyone in their maple leaf, and that's on the front page of all the Canadian papers, and we're there as their guests and participating, and it's just wonderful. And because it's Canada Day afterwards, we get to go our separate ways, but they have in downtown Victoria, they have like a festival set up, and all the shops are open, and everyone's happy, the weather's going to be wonderful. So let me know if you can join us for Canada Day, and let me know how many are coming, and what size T-shirt, because they provide them to us for free. And if you haven't had that experience, it's marvelous, and it's the 150th anniversary, so it's going to be a special celebration, and if you want to come, please do, it's fun.
Well, I don't have much to report, except that I'm really upset that I get to miss the flyers, because Deputy Mayor Kidd and myself are heading to Vancouver for the AWC, the Association of Washington Cities, so they have a conference, so enjoy all that stuff, and I hope to read a guess about it in the paper.
Send you pictures.
Yes, I really, I mean, it was on my calendar, I thought that would be great, but...
I really don't have too much to report, except that I have been able to attend two Leptis baseball games. Cory has reported, I think it also was reported in the Daily News, or on the radio, that the average attendance at the Leptis baseball game, the first seven home games, average attendance is in excess of 1,300, is that about right, Cory?
That is what's been reported, correct, and I believe we're third in the league in attendance.
Which is, is wonderful, and so my report really is just, those of you who are baseball fans especially, but those of you who are, who are supporters of this community, you are, you're here, you are supporters, otherwise you wouldn't be here. So I would invite you, on behalf of Matt Acker and the city boardhouses, to schedule in your life a game at St. Luke. This leads me to close my remarks, but I never missed the opportunity to thank our city staff for jobs well done, and civic field, the improvements will continue, this is a work in progress, and I want to thank Cory, his staff, and make a note, I guess I should make a note too, because I received an email from American Cruise Lines, I guess it was yesterday or the day before yesterday, they think so well of our community, and what they refer to as the Puget Sound itinerary. So next year in 2018, they've already scheduled 18 additional sailings, I believe it is. So, our community is being seen by people literally from all over the world, all over the United States, and what they're seeing, what they're experiencing, apparently has been good enough for the company, which is based in Guilford, Connecticut, to expand their itinerary next year in essence, expand their stops in Port Angeles. It brings new economy to our, new commerce to our community, it helps the downtown merchants, it helps, helps in a lot of ways. That now takes us to information, Al, city manager, who's ready for some?
Oh, thank you, Mayor and Council, and we have a couple items under information, but I could bring your attention to the memo, the subject is appointment of committees to draft for and against statements for the voters' guide on general election ballot measures. So I want to just provide a little bit of brief background. As you recall, on May 2nd, council approved two resolutions requesting the county auditor include a ballot proposition and an advisory proposition on the November 7th, 2017 municipal general election ballot. One of them was a resolution asking city residents to vote on a citizen's petition to change from the current council manager formed government under RCW 358 to the council manager formed government under RCW 35 in a second-class city in order to elect a full city council. The other resolution was seeking resident, city resident input regarding the fluoridation of the city's municipal water supply. State law provides the city council the ability to formally appoint committees to prepare for and against statements for inclusion in... for inclusion into the voters' guide on both ballot measures. You can appoint up to three members on each committee. It doesn't mean that additional people can't help write the statements, but those individuals identified on the committees have to be in the voters' camp, but I believe are three on each committee. Staff recommends that council appoint committees at your July 18th meeting, approximately a month from tonight. To get the information out, staff plans on putting a public notice in the newspaper. Anybody interested should contact the city clerk's office by July 10th and provide their name and address, why they want to be selected, and why they feel they're qualified to write the statements. And I also want council to know that we did receive a request to write the against statement for the ballot measure regarding fluoridation of the city's municipal water supply. And we have not received any other interest, although there have been some inquiries on the second-class city issue. So other than that, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And staff does plan on bringing that to you during the second meeting in July. The only other thing I have is kind of a recap of tonight and action items that fell out tonight. And I guess I would have to say, if I characterize tonight's meeting, it was centered around volunteerism. We did, we heard about volunteers regarding our comp plan. We heard about volunteers that participate in our park systems. We heard about volunteers that deal with emergency preparedness and the willingness to even assist the city in emergency preparedness, as well as volunteers serving on committees. And I'm sure I missed a couple tonight. But having said that, the two things that fell out of tonight were a couple work sessions. One of the work sessions dealing with emergency preparedness. And what we will do during that, and we'll develop that work session, but we'll update the council. We have work plan items that are specifically on emergency preparedness. You'll get an update on where we're at with that, as well as Jim Buck and his presentation. And we'll contact Jim on that. The other thing is that we'll be working on the issues of volunteerism and what we can do in that area to enhance actually volunteerism within the city. I mean, it is one of the backbones and one of the things I think we all enjoy about the city is people do get involved. And I was really pleased tonight with the amount of people that spoke to actually wanting to provide their time to the city. And it wasn't that long ago that we recognized volunteers, recognizing the most valuable thing people can give, more than money, is their time. So with that, back to the council.
And Mr. Mayor, I guess I do want to make a comment on those appointments and those committees because I have gotten a lot of emails. So if we can truly make this, you know, broadcast it out and Papa can do a job of that, if we can get, you know, a couple of times in the newspaper. Because I have gotten a couple emails asking to, you know, could you please put me on this committee? Can we get this happening? So there is interest out there. And so I just want to make sure that it gets broadcasted. So if you guys, you know, on Facebook, whatever, know that, please send it out, that we do need people to write these things so that they are well thought out.
And I, and I'm not sure if I stated, but we're going to try to have again that information by July 10th to prepare it for the council meeting, the upcoming council, the second council meeting in July.
Okay. And that takes us to our second public comment committee. Is there anybody in the audience this evening who wish to take this opportunity to make a comment? Name and address to the record.
Hello, I'm Dale Wilson on West 43. Three or four times tonight, I've heard the staff in the city council use the term newspaper. I'm here to remind you, there's three newspapers in town. You've got the Senior Times, you've got the Portico, now publishing for four years, and you've got the Canadian Old Paper. I'm also pleased to say that the Portico is the only one that covered these amazing kids from the Skill Center who were nominated for an Emmy, were able to go down and enjoy tuxedos, the, you know, caviar, the whole nine yards. So when you're thinking about advertising, when you're thinking about, and you know, it sounds like such a much larger town when you use the plural, newspapers. So when you're thinking about advertising, when you're thinking about putting out stories, keep in mind that you've got three newspapers in town and it sounds so much better when you can say, we'll discuss, or we'll put it in the newspapers. Thank you.
Thank you. Of course. This is your opportunity to speak.
Yeah, my name's Harvey Haylen on 600 1092. And I would like to, first of all, acknowledge that the council does a lot of amazing good things. There's potholes to fix. Many people fix the potholes. But what concerns me is that I hope you do not develop a pothole mentality where you don't think about larger issues. And there are amazingly large issues of concern. And there's certain pivot points in history where times change, circumstances change. And one of those, in my opinion, was April 6th of this year when this unprecedentedly, the United States decided to bomb some other country using cruise missiles. There was no UN resolution, there was no act of Congress. It was completely illegal and aggressive war. There are other times, pivotal times. I think back to 9/11. That was a pivotal moment. The consequence of it has been that there is billions of people have died. Our drug problem in the city emanates from that time when we took over Afghanistan. And then the drugs came into this country. So there's tremendous consequences when these things happen. Did you notice yesterday, we've been sent 5,000 more troops to Afghanistan? Do you think that's not going to have an effect, an effect on this city? More drugs will be coming in. That's what the purpose of it is. But right at the moment, the key point that I personally remember is October 29, 1962. I remember that day very specifically. That was the culmination of the Cuban Missile Crisis. And on that day, there were American Navy SEALs in Havana Harbor. And this isn't in the history books, but I've got it from sources. And they got caught, several women died, others were wounded. They got back to their submarine. But there was 100,000 troops in Cuba, ready to invade. They came within two hours of invading. The commanders in Cuba had their orders that if the invasion occurs, they were to release their missiles. And we would have an intern war then. You wouldn't have me speaking to you today, but then you wouldn't be here even. Tonight is June 20th, 2018. And Russia and the United States is as eyeball to eyeball tonight as they were in 1962, October 29. Think about what's happening. Vladimir Putin has said, okay, is my time up?
Your news.
It is, okay. I'll let it go at that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, the chair will recognize a motion for adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second half.
If it was okay with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Again, thank you for being here.